Good evening. The meeting for the Wichita County Council, September 2nd of 2014 is now called audit. You all please rise and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Moment of silence for Richard "Doc" Teselli, longtime with the president. Doc was a teacher with the I, is a member of the Board of Health for many years, and also a local optometrist. And on top of all that, just a real nice guy. So a moment of silence for Doc. Thank you. Counselor Clark, Denise, would you call this?
Counselor Callen, present. Counselor Sanford. Counselor Boncor.
Here.
Counselor Barone.
Here.
Counselor LeTieri. Counselor Wayajin.
Here.
Counselor Mayo.
Here.
Vice President D'Amenta.
Present.
President Gill.
Present.
Thank you.
Counselor LeTieri and Counselor Sanford both called to say that we have 10 minutes left. Both sided with that. Minutes, the minutes of the regular meeting of August 19th is circulated. Motion by Vice President D'Amento, seconded by Counselor Wayajin.
Counsel President, I'm gonna recuse myself from the minutes, just because I wasn't there.
Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, except for Counselor Barone who will stand. The August 19th executive session minutes will be discussed in executive session. We have a public hearing for the Cottage Hill Pico Beach Areas Water Replacement Project for Bondage. I'll open the public hearing. And the public hearing reads as that $2.8 billion is appropriated for the purpose of financing the replacement of engaged water main and lead services in the Cottage Hill area and the Pico Beach surrounding area, including all costs incidental or related thereto. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow $2,800,000 and issue bonds or notes of the town under Chapter 44 of the general laws or any other enabling authority. That the treasurer with the approval of the town manager is authorized to borrow all proportion of such money, including mass water resources authority, also known as the authority. In connection therewith, to enter into a loan agreement or financial assistance agreement with the authority and otherwise to contract with the authority with respect to such loan and for any grants or aid available to the project or for financing thereof, which grants and our aid shall be expended for the project in addition to the amount appropriated and borrowed under this order. And that the town manager is authorized to acquire by purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise such rights, titles, and easements as may be necessary for such purpose. To abandon such rights, titles, and easements as they are no longer required, to expend all the funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project.
I'd ask that this matter be referred to the Finance Committee for its consideration and recommendation and that we continue the public hearing until that time.
Mr. McKenna, the town manager has requested that this matter be referred to the Finance Committee and that tonight's public hearing be continued.
I'll form and make that motion.
Motion by Counsel Vice President D'Amento, seconded by Counselor Barone. Any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Public comment.
There's a second public hearing tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No. There's a second public hearing regarding the fire chief's expenditure of insurance recovery funds of $37,707.
On the public hearing, we got in the fire chief's motion that it's a transfer of $37,702.72 for the fire chief to expend from the insurance fund to fund the fire vote. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of that motion in the public hearing?
Mr. President, just the insurance money basically raised by the people of the town for our previous fire vote is gonna be reinvested in an asset which we took surplus from Coast Guard, a 27-foot safe boat which roughly has a value when it was new of $143,000. It was purchased by the Coast Guard in 2002. It's in great condition and we're just looking to power it with the insurance money from the loss of the other boat.
Thank you. Would anybody else would like to speak in favor of the council?
Mr. President, the council finance committee held a hearing on this item and recommended moving forward. What it basically is, there's money in the insurance fund from the fire vote in order for the fire chief to expend that money in any fashion. It has to be appropriated out, so at this time I'd like to appropriate the money out of the insurance fund into the fire chief's budget so that he can work on investigating options to re-power the used donated safe boat.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yes.
And I'm in favor of it as well. It's a great asset to the town.
It is, and it's an expend of the money that we get from insurance from the other voting. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Yeah, I'm not against it. I'm just interested in knowing, did we talk to them about taking the engines off the yellow boats?
Well, I can't speak for the manager, but I think he was trying to hold that asset and sell it as a package.
Anybody else? Counselor?
Yeah, I can't help myself but have to respond to Counselor Mayo. Investigation of the motors has been made and we think there's a question of suitability with respect to this vessel. That there's a, we need to design the motorization of this vessel according to its specs and and...
I can live with that. That being the case, I'd still try to trade the engines in as we talked about last week.
They'll all be packaged with an option of that vessel in due course.
Yeah, I've spoken on this 100 times. I think the path is to minimize that asset as quickly as possible and I thought trading those engines in was, the whole thing I don't have a problem with, but I would've gone a different path.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of the opposed? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? If not, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. Public comment.
I know you probably checked the air already, but just a little clues the national grid into the council. The power outage that we had this weekend was affected initially 3,400 customers. Only lasted an hour and 15 minutes. It basically lasted the time it took the national grid here to transfer and backfeed the circuit. Two or three years ago when we were having our six and eight-hour power outage at all of the time, the council had national grid here and they pushed them high. They got the upgrade of the Hoggle Street Station, they got the right-of-way through Golden Drive, Overlook Drive, and national grid. National grid did their upgrade. They lost a tap on the transmission line that feeds the substation behind the library the other morning. What they did is they came into town, they diverted power, the outage was a little over an hour, and national grid was in town all day repairing that outage. Not everybody who was out on a large steel outage was out because we only watched one leg, but they did have to take the substation down behind the library, which would've put out the whole center area and everything on Labor Day, which would've been unfortunate, but you know, the hard work, a lot of times it goes on no reason, but I just wanted to call it to people's attention that national grid in the council that outage was an hour because we had the ability to backfeed what we didn't have before for the, behind the library that substation.
Thank you.
And one point on that, I've worked with electric companies for 40 years. I tried to call the other morning, put it on my cellphone because my landlines were dead, trying to get a report of an outage into that number. They wanted my account number. Can we get them? Request them to put an outage number there, not just their regular number. We talked to a machine for like 20 minutes before finally they said, "Oh, okay, we're gonna work on it." The machine told me. Took me a long time. I've had many other people try to call, the number that you put the telephone book, that's it. Took, like I said, it took me 20 minutes because I obviously didn't know who called who. It was out and I figured squirrels did something. And, well, that used to make us a lot of money. These squirrels are good. But, telephone communication, try to call it sometime and see what you get. See if you get right to light it. They wanted my account number, they wanted all kinds of other information. I mean, did you come up with a non-number, outage number?
So I'm just, I'm supposed to ask you for your name and precinct? I know your name.
Tom Correio, precinct five.
Thank you.
I knew that. Any other public comment? And not all of us are technologically smartphone, but the grid does have a really good outage app that if you go on there, and it's a pain to, I don't even remember how I ended up getting it on there, but they list the outages and they do it on a map format where you can press the little icon and I think you probably do it off the computer too. It'll tell you to the best of their ability what they would do. We do that all the time on a road working in storms. I think a train or, and we got a grid highs the company I work for all the time. And the guys got their phones and we'd get order 2,700 outages, we're gonna be here another two days. All this other stuff. All I'm saying is, people in town, open the winter directory, it's national grid, and get that number and it's hell to get through on it. That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Good. Any other public comments?
Do you know what?
Mr. McHale, I just wanna say that I tried to get through, it took me about 10 minutes. I never got through. I called 1-2-1-2.
Back up, Steve. Your name and precinct.
Oh, I'm sorry. Steve Machinsky, precinct five. And I called the police number and whoever set it up was pretty good because it said townwide outage. That was it. I didn't have to do anything, so that was a nice asset even though the electric company was exposed to it.
I think for the next edition of the Winterford Phone Book, I will make it a point to speak to the Chamber of Commerce and make sure that they change that number or add that number and remove it on.
And if you have a business number and an outage number.
Yeah, that should be in there. I agree with you. Okay. We'll work on that.
Any further public comment? If not, committee reports. All is noted.
The ordinance committee met on August 28th at 6:00 PM. It was called the Order, present with myself as chairman, Counselor D'Amento, Counselor Barone. Also present was Counselor Greg Mayo and Council President Peter Gill. There were three items on the agenda. The first issue was limousines and delivery license. Copies of the current bylaws were cast out as well as copies of Lind and Wellesley's ordinances. There was quite a bit of discussion on it. There was a motion made to make some amendments. I will be making those amendments under new business. The second issue was dealing with storage of motor vehicles, which is a zoning bylaw issue under 1712-080. There was motion to amend that as well. I will be making a motion under new business and reading that motion that we are going to propose to send to the planning board to hold a hearing on and come back to us for a final vote. The third issue was to send a business district and it became no issue because it had been probably the first time we did it at this meeting. It threatened its entirety. The meeting was adjourned at 7:10.
Thank you, Counselor. I skipped over, inadvertently I skipped over the correspondence. We do have a correspondence from the neighbors on Cottage Park Road. It's a petition signed by, I didn't count the number of people, but it looks like somewhere around 50 people. Enclosed, please find a petition, oh, here it is, signed by 40 Winterford residents and neighbors concerning the operation of the bed and breakfast in the real property located at 226 to 228 Cottage Park Road, a three-family residence owned by, and we leave the names of the, in correspondences in public, we leave names out. Please bring this petition to the attention of the town council. Please also bring to the attention of the town council a collective thanks to two diligent town employees, the Commissioner of Inspection Services, the Town Enforcement Officer. Each of these two employees have been responsive and attentive in addressing the concerns raised in this petition. The bed and breakfast being operated at 226 to 228 Cottage Park Road is in violation of the provisions of Chapter 17.49, and we have copies of that for anybody who'd like to see what it reads. As set forth in Section 1749.010, for the purpose of the special permit, to discourage the current illegal and possibly unsanitary operation of unlicensed boarding homes, or rooming houses, by providing clear standards for the operation of bed and breakfast establishments as defined herein. Sorry, I didn't put it in quotes. I should've read in quotes, "to discourage the current illegal and possibly unsanitary operation of unlicensed boarding homes or rooming houses by providing clear standards for the operation of bed and breakfast establishments as defined herein," end of quote. We would like the town council to enforce the violation notices issued to date, pressure the homeowners to stop permitting the unlawful use of their property, and assure the neighbors that the integrity of the neighborhood will not be jeopardized by the continued operation of the illegal breakfast operation. We look forward to presenting our comments to the town council in person. And it has the, and it has a couple of attachments of ads from Airbnb. That concludes the correspondence.
Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to just present the board with some information here on the 26 to 28. It's all the correspondence with the building inspector, certified letters, copies of Airbnb showing that there isn't anything on there as of certain times, just add some information. And you can check with the...
We will take that as a correspondence and deliver the correspondence. Give it to the board.
Okay.
I'd like to ask for a couple of questions.
Thank you. Moving on. Just a comment on that, I know that our building inspection department has issued cease and desist orders to several operating, several people that are operating bed and breakfasts, bed and breakfast operations without licenses. They've been ordered to cease and desist and the building department and inspectional services is in the process of enforcing. Okay, back to Chairman.
Do you want to be heard?
We had public comment. If it's the feeling of the majority of the council that they would like to refer back to public comment, we can. I'm happy to do it.
I say the motion is to go back to public comment.
The motion has been made by Counselor Mayo and seconded by Counselor Delvert. On Cory, to move back to public comment.
Mr. Counsel President, my name is Jim Rutter and I live in Prince, precinct five. And I'm here with one, two, three, four, five, actually nine of my neighbors to address the issue of the bed and breakfast.
Could you speak up, sir? Yeah, speak up a little louder.
I live in precinct five and 191 Cottage Park Road. I'm surrounded by nine of my neighbors who are concerned enough about the operation of this bed and breakfast in a house owned by Steve Machinsky, who didn't identify himself when he entered the documents.
Mr. Rutter, Counsel.
Yes.
I don't want to read the whole list of rules about public comment unless you want me to. One of them is there are no names. You noticed when I read your correspondence, I referred to the owner. You can refer to the owner of the property in question, but there will be no names. Thank you.
This is an operation, according to the information that we've read and specifically reviews on Airbnb, that has been in operation since December of 2013. We reviewed the building jacket for that particular property and apparently it's a lawful three-family, but it has taken no steps to become legalized under the new bed and breakfast ordinance. The two town employees who've been very responsive to our concerns have tried to address it with the owner and the tenant, which again is very unclear to us who's responsible for the operation of this bed and breakfast. Those town employees, again, should be commended for their diligence in this. The biggest concern we have is there seems to be some syllogism going on with the, one of the four operators of the bed and breakfast saying to one of his neighbors that he intended to continue to have friends and guests in his apartment and that he couldn't afford the apartment unless he continued to have these friends and guests. We just want to stop. It's not the type of use that's appropriate in that neighborhood. There's inadequate parking and we would just ask this board to monitor the situation, stand behind the violation notices that have been issued by the appointed officials responsible for issuing them, and if they want to try to legalize this operation, they can file an application with the zoning board of appeals and the secret agent in special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment while we're still in public comment?
I'd just like to say Steve Machinsky, precinct five, that issue is cease and desist and that has been notified, I notified the building inspector, he's aware of it, I've been in contact with him, and all the information is there. There are three families living there, including myself, and we do have guests, non-paying, non-Airbnb guests that come in occasion, sometimes for a period of time. My family's from England, people on the third floor have both connections from Ecuador and also from Midwest. And also my second floor tenant has people around who they stay, not paying and nothing to do with Airbnb. So I just wanna make that statement.
I would just ask Mr. McKenna, as I'm sure he will, to remind the building inspector, building commissioner, to continue with his diligence with this. And I would urge the neighbors, if they have any suspicion of violation, from here on to notify either Mr. McKenna or Mr. LeTieri.
I want to just have a question. I thought a B&amp;B was only, could only operate that out of a single-family home. How would you operate that out of a three-family?
I believe it's an owner occupied. I don't believe it says single, but I would have to, I can just quickly review it. However, in order to operate a B&amp;B, you have to have a B&amp;B license and there's only one license in town right now.
Chairman, I can attest that. I respect the bylaw.
Have you?
And I think Counselor Callen is right.
I will double-check if all I have in front of me is.
Specifically drawing your attention to the last sentence of the last section.
The last sentence in the last section, the last section of 10 of all 100?
I think it's in the last section of 29, something about preserving the character of single-family restaurants.
That's in, yes, Mr. President, yeah. With all due respect to everybody with this public comment, I think we have our, it's in process. I think we should, just everybody knows what's going on and let it be handled properly. If this is the format of debate. From what I briefly read here, it doesn't say single residents. However, as Counselor Vice President D'Amento said, we are aware. You ready?
It says here, but Mr. McKenna, we can refer the matter for clarification to our council if they were involved in it.
But, yes, we're well aware and the operation of enforcement, not only for that particular one, is in process. Is there any further public comment now that we've reverted back?
There's no public comment.
We just need a name?
My name is Rob Savino. I live in precinct five. I have a question of, off a different subject. To my understanding, we're looking to procure a ferry for the ferry service down at the town pier. Is this gonna be opened up to public comment? Are we gonna be able to follow that and see what's happening with the ferry service and?
We, I need to be cautious in public comment. We have a citizen who's concerned about the way the open meeting law is being conducted through forum, and because of that, we cannot answer specific questions in public comment. We can only take your public comment as a request and deal with it in the future. So you have the comment that you are concerned that we will have public...
Okay, so the public comment would be this. It would be nice to, via social networking, the town manager's newsletter, I read all of those, to be informed as soon as you guys have the information of what direction's going, whether we can come into public comment, stuff like that.
Definitely, yeah. Yeah, that will be an informed issue. Any further public comment? Counselor Mayo.
I just do want to address one of your issues. I think I've read a lot recently about how the decision for the ferry was made in a...
Counselor Mayo, I want to be very cautious. As I said, we have a citizen who's concerned about the way we operate and that becomes deliberation, so the comment period doesn't...
I think if you hear my statement, again, you'll realize that I'm not saying anything. What I'm stating is the fact that I believe people think that this was done in a fog, that there was no...
With all due respect, Counselor Mayo, that's it.
So let me try, let me try my comment again. I think the public calendar would probably show that there have been many meetings in town regarding the ferry. The Economic Development Committee had it as an agenda item. The Harbor Management had it as an agenda item. It was in a joint meeting and it has been discussed briefly many times in Finance Committee for the initial funding for it. And I think that one of the things that I spoke of last time that becomes very important is the fact that we do try our best to get people to come to those discussions. And I'll tell you, it was disappointing when the ferry was discussed to not have 40 or 50 people that came to it. Mr. Domalovich had a discussion on the ferry, that they did have 50 or 60 people, that was very well received, and I believe it brought a level of clarity to what the decision-making process was. But moving forward, we would still have to appropriate money, which means at a public session, at a public hearing, and at the Finance Committee, those things will be well vetted and I hope, especially someone like yourself who takes a big deal of pride in their operation down at the pier, would come and be a partner with that and potentially even consider helping us as you are a resident on the Harbor Management Committee where we solely need commercial people like yourself who can help vet these things. So I ask you that as a, you know, as a consideration on your part, that you consider joining us so we can make these decisions.
Thank you, Counselor. And thank you for your interest and we could always use help on the other end, but I think they could see there now if you'd be interested in a public application. If you're interested. Moving back to, if there is no further public comment, moving back to committee reports. Counsel Vice President.
The Finance Committee held a meeting here on August 28th at 7:30 here in the Harbor Hearing Room. It's called order at 7:30. President, one of myself and Counselor Sanford on the committee, also in attendance were Counselor Mayo and Fire Chief Glenigan. There were three items on the agenda. One was to pay some prior year bills, the transfer of $6,000 to fund the joint managing grant, and transfer $37,702.72 from the fire chief to expend the show's funds for the fire vote. All items are ready, there's discussion on all items and there's a motion by Counselor Sanford to move all three items forward with positive recommendations of the full council. It's an unanimous vote with a motion and meeting adjourned at 7:40.
Counselor. Any further committee reports? If not, Mr. McKenna?
Yes, good evening. I just have a couple of items to review with the council this evening, but spending my time the past week and for the next few weeks in negotiation with our various unions and that will be taking up quite a bit of my time for the next few weeks. I've been handling a lot of personnel matters and, you know, it seems to be this time of year, we get a lot of issues that come up and we're dealing with them. It's been great having our new HR director involved with the town. There's been enormous help that she's been giving to me and to John Lucero. I think we hired 40 new teachers in the district. That's just tremendous and she's been handling that hiring process, so I commend her. And, you know, I just want to commend the town staff for the team effort that has been made over the past couple of weeks. over the past couple of weeks to assure that the schools open successfully tomorrow. I think we've all pitched in and given, you know, toted a bail and done what we could, particularly the DPW and the facilities maintenance crew under Rich Safuni have done tremendous work to help the schools. And I think, I think it shows. Many of you have taken a walk through the new high school, contemporary high school. And, you know, just the presence of those facilities outside and inside both of all our schools seems to be in shipshape. I'm very proud of that. I want to thank Counselor Teary and the Rink Committee for starting up the rink this season and all it took to transform that building to a working ice rink from a very successful year summer with the recreation department. That was a quick transformation. It's still ongoing, but it's great to see that happening and the staff involved there. And there's just a lot going on in the town. I put a few notices on the blog about what's going on. I'm trying to keep the public informed with some visuals now in the newsletter so they see, you know, what's going on in town. And there's just a lot. And I appreciate every effort that everyone is making to complete these projects. Speaking of a project, we had a Coffin Park meeting this evening. Thank you, Counselor Rokori and Counselor Delvento for attending. We had, I bet, 50 people there roughly. And I think it was a good meeting. You know, a lot of folks had a lot on their mind and thoughts and input. And we heard those, you know, concerns. And my staff, Steve Callas, Sean Driscoll, Paul O'Donnell were there to field questions. And, you know, there's more to be said and done there at the park. But I think all in all, I think people left satisfied with our report, satisfied of the effort that's being made at the park. You know, we're spending roughly $325,000 on that park. You know, that's anywhere from five to six times more than we are spending at any other park. And so it, you know, both state and town funds to really make that park be a showcase for the town and for the point. And I think when all's said and done, people should be happy with what they had as a result. There was some input on a few items that will still be considered to be potentially added to the park. But all in all, I think people felt they got what they needed to say, you know, said to us. Thanks again to Nick Delvento for your leadership at that meeting. I know we sent out a warning to the town on Code Red this week on West Nile virus. So I just wanted to reiterate that it's important for people to still be vigilant and take note of the fact that our surrounding communities have been testing positive for West Nile virus. We have not tested positive, but still, we are within the general sphere of influence of that, of those positive hits. And so we have to advise our community to be mindful at dawn and dusk to take precautions and to do what they can to avoid getting bitten by any mosquitoes. And I wanted to inform the council that the Planning Board is having a workshop on September 25th at 7:00 PM at the Senior Center to discuss the House vote issue and to take input on the issue and to discuss how to regulate, if they would recommend regulation at all, such as posed in the town of Bush. So that's again, it's 7 o'clock on September 25th. And I want to thank Chairman Roach for leading the way on that issue. Thanks.
Excuse me. Chair, may I call some back? The grant that we got was significant. Could you just elaborate on that a little bit?
$200,000 grant from the DCR, which is certainly a substantial grant for parks. We guys, we actually asked for less and got more than what we asked for because they saw such promise in the park. They thought, they gave us a little extra, which was nice. But we've added town funds. And we've also added, you know, in-kind services from the DPW that have done a lot, most of the prep work down there, as you see already. And over the next six weeks, that park will be literally transformed into, with new equipment, new surfacing, you know, complete redo of the facility. And, you know, I think at the end of the day, it'll be as nice as the other parks we've restored.
Thanks to you and to Steve and the Parks Committee for your leadership. And I think over the last couple of years, it's not only Coffin Park that we've seen tremendous improvement in the feel and the visibility and the- The place looks great. And that's beautification of the whole community. Counselor Mail.
Is that, is that September 25th died in the wool?
That's the notice they sent to me.
Yeah. Russia shone of that.
Oh.
I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't affect a lot of people. It affects me. I've been watching that thing since October last year. I hate to just let it ride there. So Peter's in charge of it. I'll just send him a note.
Well, let's send him a note and see if that's where Mr. Chang's meeting.
Would you take care of that, Frank? Would you?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate it. It's a hard night.
Thank you.
Counselor, I have two things. Thank you for the Coffin Park meeting. I think it was very beneficial to get, to get out there, to get a little number of rumors to rest and getting the bulk of the work done before the first of the year, getting it in for the season, decorating the other amenities and traffic work on over the winter. So kickoff in the spring, we'll start everything really good down there. One thing I do have a good comment on is the schools. We go back to school tomorrow. And a lot of work has been done. And every, a lot of anxiety. There are a lot of tentative plans in place. And, you know, for lack of a better word, then, you know, they've got some great plans. But, you know, I'm sure not everything's going to be worked out in the first day or two. There's going to be some anxiety. There's going to be some tweaking that needs to be done. So I'm just asking everybody to be tolerant, see what's going on, be productive in comments if you see things that you think may need to be adjusted. And let's give it till October, November to shake out. There's going to be, I know there are going to be changes made in the plan. I mean, it's a large plan. It's a large move for the school system and for the whole town. And we'll see how things shake out. But I just give, you know, give it a few weeks and we'll see how the tweak, you know, things need to be adjusted and tweaked. And maybe by October, November, everybody can get everything straightened out to really be running. But I think the plan is good. It's as good as we can get. The place looks great. Everything, you know, everything that can be thought of has been thought of and addressed. And let's just see what happens. But I just ask everybody to be tolerant and productive for the next few weeks. Don't, instead of jumping on the little items, let's, if you see an item, if you notice something, take a look at it. And don't just say, this doesn't work. Say, you know, how would you think of this? Or maybe you can do that. And that's from everybody, from the parents to the town citizens, to the school administration and the town, and the town sides. It's going to be a team effort. Everybody's going to be involved the next few months to get this to roll for the next two years.
I have a little one. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have to agree. I had an opportunity to go through the school today with Superintendent Macero. And the teachers are back. And the energy level was very high. People were really pumped about being there. And the school looks great. And John, Superintendent Macero is excited about the stripes being in the right place outside the balcony, as to things that were going on inside the building. And again, as Counselor Delvento said, there's the plan and then there's real life. Until the kids get in there, until the programs are running and the teachers are teaching, some of those things are not going to be maybe in place or maybe just haven't been thought out yet. But it's going to take a little time, a little patience. We have to look at the big picture. In two years from now, we're going to have a beautiful high school. We're going to be able to make some moves that this town has been anticipating for a long time. So hang in there, everybody, and let's all work together.
I too had the opportunity to walk through and I had the opportunity to meet all the new teachers at their, and they're very enthusiastic for it. All of the rumors about how bad the building was inside and all the stuff that was piled up and wasn't unpacked were put aside. And I don't think we really need a couple of months. I think we're going to be rolling tomorrow when the kids walk in. And I've asked the superintendent, instead of coming tonight, I've asked him to come two weeks from tonight and give us a report after we've had 10 days or eight days of school because there'll be a workshop day and a middle of reelection day. But I told him, "True," and as Counselor Sanford said, in two more years, we'll have a brand new school. Thanks to the Council of the Committee of the-
I'm in the Town Committee of Precinct Five. A year and a half ago, my grandson was involved in an incident down here where the principal gave him some cookies that he said had no knocks in it, and so on and so forth. And anyway, there was no dress on the property. Can the school committee work out of jail? There's going to be kids-
That's up to the school committee. You'll have to address that with them.
You guys aren't going to know that?
The school committee is totally separate.
The nurse wasn't there. If he didn't have his EpiPen, what's he getting yelled at for having? He might have died.
Yeah, that's up to, that's a school committee issue. We can't deal with that.
I would think that that's a safety thing, that if there's going to be kids in school in dress or some kind of professional person should be there just in case.
Okay, moving on to all business. Counselor. The, at the request of the Board of License Commission, we moved that the town, this is a motion on the all business, that the town council accept and activate an ordinance establishing light livery licenses. And I'll turn this back to the council.
That motion came before the Rules and Orders Committee. And Rules and Orders Committee, perceived by HACOB, we already have a bylaw that addresses taxicabs and liveries. So we did make some motions to tweak that to fit with the wishes of the people looking for livery licenses and to the licensing boards. So at this point, I make a motion to amend Woodford Code of Ordinance, Title V, Chapter 5.28.030, by adding the following sentence to the end of License Required. And that sentence is, each vehicle must be registered and garaged in the town of Woodford. And the business must operate from a location or office in a properly zoned business district. And that's the procedure.
Motion by Counselor Paul Corey, coming from the Rules and Orders, does not require a second. Does any discussion on the motion? Not all of you in favor? Motion say aye?
Aye.
Close, unanimous. Thank you, counsel.
The second motion is to amend Chapter 5.28.120, which is fees. Motion is to amend 5.28.120B by changing the words $50 to $100. And Section 5.28.120C by adding the word slash livery between the words taxi cab and driver and by changing the words $10 to $20. We have three different motions.
Does this need to be advertised?
No.
Okay, so we have three different motions. Go ahead.
Okay.
You want to do the call as three?
I don't want to do several, okay, different chapters.
Motion coming from Rules and Orders, does not require a second. Any discussion? If not, all of you in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, unanimous.
Thank you. The next one is to amend Chapter 5.28.130 Fares by adding the word taxi between the words farm and transportation in Sections A1 and A2. And by adding a new Section 4, which you read, Section 4, the minimum fare for livery service shall be $35.
Coming from Rules and Orders Committee, they'll put the recommendation, no second required. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
If not, all of you in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, unanimous. The code for storing motor vehicles?
Motion on the storing of motor vehicles and restrictions is an ordinance that we have under the zoning section, which is Chapter 17 of our bylaws. So any motion that we would come up with would have to go to Planning Board for a public hearing on a zoning change. But the Rules and Orders Committee is making a motion to send the following motion to the Planning Board for their review. And that motion is to delete Woodford Town Ordinance and replace it with 17.12.080A Storing Motor Vehicle Restrictions. No person shall have, keep, or store more than one unregistered, uninsured, or inoperable vehicle, boat, camper, trailer, or recreational vehicle, ungaraged, or on his or her premises for more than 72 hours. Nor shall any unregistered, uninsured, or inoperable motor vehicle, boat, trailer, camper, or recreational vehicle be stored in the front yard of a residential or commercial business, except lots duly licensed in accord to Woodford Ordinance by the Woodford Licensing Board to be used for outdoor automobile rental or sales or storage or rental or sales.
Coming, coming from the committee.
Coming from committee, the motion is to refer this to the Planning Board at this point.
Second? Do I have a second? We don't need a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, I have. Can't that be, that motion be separated? I mean, it seems like there's a lot in there that, you know, there are people that have boats, they have trailers, I mean, that are in their yacht. You're saying that they can't have them in there for more than 72 hours?
Only if they're unregistered.
Unregistered, uninsured, or inoperable.
They're unregistered, uninsured, or inoperable. But if they are registered and insured, they-
And to summarize what this, what this does, this actually takes the current code and just adds, right now, the current, all those restrictions are currently in the residential areas. All this does is also add commercial elements to it. Because there's a little void in the, our current code, the delete, that didn't specify business commercial.
If there is further discussion, I'm going to refer to the Planning Board. If not, all of you in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Close, unanimous. We'll set up a hearing for the 16th. Planning Board will vote on the 15th. On the 16th, we have that seminar at 7:00. We'll just set the hearing to 7:00. It should be a two or three minutes, unless you want to set it for six hours. Okay, Denise, would you advertise the hearing with that language?
And that has to get to the Planning Board for their evaluation.
And then we will get it to be a road.
Okay. Do you want the hearing at 6:40? Do you want me to go?
When I go at 7:00.
7:00.
Yeah. Because it should be a very short. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay, from the Finance Committee's meeting, October, August eighth, twenty-eighth, three motions came out with positive action, action recommendations. The first motion from committee is to move that the town council approve the fire chief to extend from insurance recovery, Department Fund 712 up to thirty-seven thousand, seven-hundred and seven dollars, seventy-two cents for purpose of procurement and opening. The fire board ought to take any other action relative thereto.
Coming from a committee, from committee, there's no second required. Any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Council. No, I got it. We don't have technical, I remember.
Also coming from committee from the same August twenty-eighth meeting, move that the town council transfer six thousand dollars from the town council reserve to a special revenue fund for the town's portion of the joint energy management, manager grant or take any other action relative thereto.
Coming from committee, there's no second required. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
Also from the August twenty-eighth Finance Committee meeting, there was one other positive recommendation moved to the council, and that is to move the town council vote to approve the payment of prior year bills in the aggregate of eight hundred and one dollars and ninety-one cents from current year budget for each department as noted. Council on Aging Utilities, account 0154152521600 for five hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-one cents for fiscal twenty fourteen. Department of Public Works, Contract Services, account 0142052544350 for two hundred and eighty-eight dollars for fiscal twenty thirteen.
Coming from committee, there's no need for second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Still under old business, the Shirley Street, Cross Street, Ball petition is still being continued. Under new business, the appropriation of the two-point-eight million for the age water phase of Potachilla Pico has been referred to Finance. Mr. Manager, appointment of...
Yes, as, the council is the hiring authority for its both external and internal auditors. The external auditor is under a three-year contract with the town. The internal auditor is on a one-year appointment annually. Dick Kingston performs that activity on behalf of the council, providing almost weekly review of the financial offices of the town, its ledgers, and all the expenditures and revenues of the town, and assures internal auditing and control essentially duties on behalf of the council. He is required to have a continued appointment, and I so recommend that the council, please continue their appointment.
I have a motion to move that the town council appoint Boozie Kingston and company as the internal auditor in accordance with Section 2-8C of the Woodford Town Charter for terms that expire due thirty-two thousand fifteen. I'll take any other action relative thereto. Right, a motion? Motion by Council?
Let me just get that.
Second. Second by Council Dovento. Council of Congress.
The town charter gives us the option of hiring in-town audit, which we didn't hire the outside auditor this past year with a three-year contract. Mr. Kingston has been wanting as part of the finance department, has he not?
No. Mr. Kingston's role is as an internal auditor. He looks over the shoulder of the finance department. An auditing function is specifically precluded from being part of the financial offices. It works on your behalf as the town's council's appointment.
I understand what you're doing, Mr. Kingston. My concern is, we have in our budget money for the town audit, which is the company that we hired from the outside.
No, there are two line items. There are two line items in your budget. One for the annual outside audit and two for the internal audit. You pay thirty-five thousand dollars annually for an internal audit to serve on an ongoing basis for auditing purposes. You don't just take a one-year look back at what has been done. You're looking every week at what's going on through the eyes of Mr. Kingston.
Our CFO, sure, but, but he is, his work and his team's work is reviewed every week,
every Monday by, by Mr. Kingston. And Mr. Kingston's your appointment.
Okay, and he answers to us.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Tim, if I might add, he is, he is your internal auditor as, as the town council. If there's any special projects that you would like him to look at, that certainly will, well within your prerogative is your internal auditor.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Council?
I personally think the guy has done a good job, and I think where we stand in the town is do good at his work, and I would like to keep him on. It was nice when he used to come and maybe grovel for the work. Just the thought, maybe you want to pass to him for...
We'll ask him to grovel.
Makes me feel as though it's been...
If you get your money's worth, if he comes to me...
He does a great job. There's no question about that. I'm just wondering where...
That's it. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those who agree with the motion, please say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. Councilman Allen?
So, I, I'm, I'm making a motion, I'll, I'll, thank you, I'm reading exactly. So, the subject is the MWRA Citizen Advisory Committee. I move that the town council encourage the MWRA to establish a citizen advisory committee and to meet with such committee on a regular basis to discuss areas of concern, including both the positive and negative effects of the operation of Deer Island in the town of Woodford, or to take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second for Council? Second by Council, please President Dovento. Discussion?
Yes.
Richard, you want to...
Oh, well, no, I mean, I think mine was to give a more formal structure to the, the MWRA had said that they would meet with concerned citizens, but I don't see any routine meeting and it tend, again, I've only been here for a year, but it seems like it stagnates and goes nowhere time after time. And I'd like a more formal approach to the citizens being involved in this and looking at the different aspects that MWRA affects our community.
Councilor Calhoun?
Well, the, I mean, I think that there was a group here that made it perfectly clear they didn't want the town council to regulate their meetings or get involved in that. So if they, if they do create their own committee and it falls by the wayside, then there's no one to blame on that end. You know, we get involved, then there's the feeling that we're getting involved and we're taking over, you know what I mean, that type of thing? So I don't really know really what we should do.
I think this specifically speaks to that the council does not get involved with this.
I'm asking the MWRA to actually create something themselves with an actual committee for them, not, not for us to be involved at all.
Is it going to be MWRA committee?
The Citizen Advisory Committee.
Nothing to do with us.
All right, but, I mean, we have citizen advisory committees, like the Financial Citizen Advisory Committee.
You know, Airport, Airport has a committee who deals with mask ports, supported by us. Those committees all have to have open meetings, they have to keep minutes, they have to go over the open meeting law. If, if this thing comes through here, they may have to do that same thing, and I don't know that we want that.
That's, okay, Council Dovento.
I think the intent is, and that would be the MWRA's discretion to, if they, they can get opinion on if the committee needs to be advertised in the whole minutes and post minutes and all that. I think the situation comes down to, it was a drive by a group to static committees such that they have in House Neck with the MWRA, which is citizens meeting on a regular basis to kind of represent the citizen without us being involved. I'd like to give that a chance, that that, and, you know, if you're going to have an ad hoc committee, you've got to have some type of, some type of general structure to it. And this way, this group, they can set their own general structure to it without, like what is coming from the council, direction coming from the council. So that they can, if they're really concerned about meeting on a regular basis and representing and not waiting until it gets too late until something happens, that they can meet, you know, beginning, you know, twice a year or three times a year with the MWRA and sit, sit down with them, discuss their issues, keeping us out of it, everybody's more aware. They have, they have a direct advocate.
I'm very concerned that if we sanction them and we take a vote to read this, the committee, the citizens advisory committees, if they have to follow the open meeting law. I just probably get, probably the page to give a decision on it before we vote on this thing.
I just, I'm going to let them... I, I, I very much echo your sentiments that I don't want this specifically, Councilor Calhoun, specifically, I don't want this to be related to the council. And that's why it was written that it would be an MWRA standard. I, I know that when the people were here with Council Dovento spoke about this several months back, they also wanted to be independent of the council. So I think that was clear. So maybe, I like Councilor Calhoun's suggestion, that the impetus would be on the people who want this meeting set up, for them to go to MWRA without our direction and without our requesting MWRA. Council, Chief, could you give a comment on this to you?
Initially, when the code digestion was started, or the conversation was, the point got together, and I think they, I mean, Catholic Cucchio was appointed the head poncho, if you will, with no disrespect, and they agreed to have two meetings annually, one in the spring and one in the fall to discuss what happened previously. But that doesn't seem to be sufficient. And I think the MWRA would agree to a third one, because I, I think what we have goes on down Deer Island by surpasses what goes on down College Neck. You know, if they can do it two, maybe we can do it three. Mr. Stafford, who was really the gate guy down there, anytime anything happens, if he sees anything, when he sits on his porch, he calls. He's very satisfied with the results he gets. They do the investigation, there was two trucks that went in that didn't have their bed covered. He reported on, he had, you know, they dealt with a contractor, somebody came down, saw Mr. Stafford, satisfied him. So, you know, if they feel they need a third meeting, but we will, at next Wednesday, be scheduling a fall meeting, and wherever the venue is going to be, whether it's going to be back at the PSA or wherever. And then if, you know, the council, and I think the council kind of stayed away from the couple of meetings we had down there, going with your theme of tonight, that this is a citizens group, and it's not going to be influenced by the council. We want you to have your say in the whole thing. But if they feel, the community feels it needs to be a third meeting, then, you know, we have one, you know, three times a year or quarterly. But so right now, there doesn't seem to be any outcry that we're not being heard right now.
Councilor Ture?
I would just like to use my council prerogative as the first time come before us and give us some time to, you know, hear from some people and get what we're doing on before...
Okay, Councilor Ture is using his prerogative to postpone the next meeting.
Well, just, well, Chief was up...
Oh, yeah.
Was there an incident this morning down, as if they were firing the...
This morning, there was a, a fifteen horsepower monitor that all we needed, generated some smoke, tripped the system, and you got a response provided by the town as well. It was a, it was a pretty...
It feels...
Can I speak to Chief as well? So you're on, you know, the board there, you're representing the town. And could you, you know, maybe if you can just give us an overview of what's happening now with that code digestion project and that, you know...
The code of digestion is still going, the DEP has put their date for its mandatory seventeen hundred restaurant facilities to start, you know, having their food waste picked up. Starving shop, there's numerous private industries now building their own code digestion plans. The MWRA still strongly feels that they're an environmental agency, they have to get involved. But all of the talk is still, it's all barging at this point. They've done soundings, got a compare, sufficient to take the barge. Waste management, which is a contractor to do while they're hauling to the Childstown facility, is out pricing barges in the early stage, what they call the trial period. There'll be five compartments in this barge, and only be filling two of them during the trial period. All of the results still come back, they have more methane, just about as much methane. Every once in a while, you'll see them flaring methane, they're burning excess methane. People say, why do they need more methane if they're flaring it off? Anytime they take a boiler offline, boilers that build high-pressure steam eat the eggs all year long, so it's a byproduct of the methane. If they go into code digestion, they're going to build electric turbines driven by methane, and they figure it will be a five million dollar a year savings to ratepays. One of the discussions that's going on in the board, this right now, they're picking up food waste, you're going to have to buy food waste because it's going to become a resource, just like the grease in the restaurants. The vending companies, the rendering companies used to charge to pick it up. Now they're buying it at fifty dollars a barrel. So if you go to a restaurant that's got two drums of grease, it's costing you a hundred bucks to pick it up because it's being used to generate anything. So the MWRA is still looking at the fact, is this long-term going to be worth ultimately up to a twenty million dollar investment to build this methane turbine, which will be generating almost eighty-five percent of the electricity in Deer Island. And the electric field down Deer Island is shot at thirty million dollars.
One more question I have. Do you have any knowledge as to, last weekend, I was out a little bit in Woodford Popper, and there was like a brown, foamy kind of, something floating around on the water, you know?
We've had, we've had it here, we've had some high bacteria, both on...
There wouldn't be anything coming from Deer Island, would it? No.
Chief, between now and the next meeting, could you do a little reaching out and see if maybe the, the system of a committee is working the way it is and...
I'll reach out to you.
And let us know in the...
For next meeting.
Thank you.
I just have a question here.
Yes?
This poses an interesting issue. If there's too much competition in the marketplace and there is a finite amount of waste product, they may not find that they can make the whole thing sustainable in the market environment.
And I would be lying to you to tell you that on the board meetings, this is by five on a slam dunk here, that's why they originally were doing the trial period. And now what happened is to go to the barging, it adds about two-point-five million to the trial cost. So they're out now looking, they have three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in grant money from the DEP to initially get off the ground with this, but they're looking for extra funding and they figure that if it was a mandated thing, they will get funding for the trial period. But this isn't even a slam dunk yet on the board.
Thank you. Public comment?
I just have one quick one. I was reading somewhere, I'm not sure where, that somebody had reported a leak on Bellevue. And one of the things, a lot of times, things start going around town, and we just did Bellevue over, and I had asked Steve, and I'm sure you can confirm, that that in fact was not a leak on town property, but on private property.
A irrigation leak.
A irrigation leak. So that brings us up to another good thing, and that is the fact that there are twenty people on the DPW and thirty on the fire and the police and few in town help, and there's like, how many miles of roads in town? Forty-six. So we don't always see any, everything, so when something gets reported to us, it generally gets fixed pretty quick and gets addressed pretty quick. And I think that everybody that's out in the town has to serve as a sort of a watch person to see these things that do happen, because I know you guys can't catch up on everything all the time, and I just wanted to keep the people that write to me with that stuff. It's not embarrassing to call up and get an answer and get the thing fixed.
Anything?
Since you, he was just saying that FYI, at the corner of Bartlett, and I guess it's going to be Pleasant? What does it, yeah, I think it's Pleasant, there is a natural gas leak there. And there has been a natural gas leak there for quite some time. My wife and I walk that corner quite a bit.
Can you smell it?
Oh, you sure can smell it, yeah. Maybe it's not enough, but I figured I'd put that out.
Thank you. I know that they, they address those in some level, even if you can smell it, it's not dangerous, but, Jim, could you address it? Thank you. Any further public comment? Still, under public relations, the people that are having the, those who can, for those in need, have asked me to remind everyone that September sixth, that's this Saturday, they're having their fair at Ingleside Park, they're ten to two. Our next regular meeting will be held at the DeLeo Senior Center, and we're going to have the open meeting law seminar starting at seven. It's going to run till about eight-thirty, and our regular, it's all part of the regular meeting, but the regular business probably won't start until about eight-thirty. The Marie Petrucci Annual Walk is the following Saturday, the September thirteenth, and the Neil Shapiro Annual Walk is the Saturday after that. So we have three Saturdays in a row, the sixth, the thirteenth, and the twentieth. Anybody else under reminders of upcoming stuff? If not, Councilance, we have a motion to, we're going to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to the open meeting compliance and pending litigation. The pending litigation is police department litigation. Chair declares that discussion of these matters in an open meeting could have a detrimental effect on the pending litigation and on open meeting compliance. But I have a motion. Motion by Councilway President Dovento, seconded by Council Sanford, the role called.
Council Calhoun?
Yes.
Council Sanford?
Yes.
Council Boncory?
Yes.
Council Verone?
Yes.
Council Luteri?
Yes.
Council Mayagen?
Yes.
Council Mail?
Yes.
President Engle?
Yes.
The council will return to open session from executive session for adjournment. Thank you, folks, for your attendance and your participation.